I wrote to like, "I'm stopping the snow and there was snow."
Right up until he's no longer mayor.
And I said, "You know, I can pull off that sign."
I'd like to call this meeting with town council to order a new point of interest.
The major citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, great liberty, and justice for all.
Roxanne, would you call the roll?
He's not smoking.
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Let's go over here.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Here.
Mr. France?
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mrs. McGrath?
Here.
Mr. Song?
Yes, here.
Mrs. Decker?
Here. Finally.
Zero asks.
Cover your maces, right?
Are there any resident and property owners who would like to address the council at this time? No! Well, we, I just want you to know that we have missed you. And we do enjoy coming to our meetings. Committee, commission, and board reports, any reports? Okay. I know, I'm gonna text my husband eight o'clock instead of eight thirty. Comments, town councillors? Yes, Mr. Stone?
I would like to propose an ordinance this evening that the mayor of Leger not be allowed to leave town.
You know, I asked him earlier if maybe we should just get it right on the town calendar, that we know we're gonna have an emergency when the mayor's vacationing. So if he schedules his vacations, well, I saw.
Any other comments from town councillors, yes?
I have, I have one, and I'll, I'll be brief with this. This comes from the General Assembly, which is a proposed bill 5595. And as a small business owner, this, this disturbs me. It's been referred to committee, introduced by Representative Ritter from Waterford, I believe. It's an act concerning a quote-unquote hoarders tax. It says, "Be it enacted by the state senate and House of Representatives and the General Assembly convene, that the general statutes be amended to institute a small tax on companies' liquid assets with the proceeds applied to programs to create jobs." When we get to that point of taxation, I think we have a real problem. And when we start taxing cash that's in small business and large businesses' accounts, we're, we're going down a road that we shouldn't be going. So I, I have a real problem with this, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna be vocal about this.
Good, I hope we read about you in the paper. It's already so hoarder, I mean, I know what a hoarder is.
This is, this is basically saying people who keep money in their bank account. A, a company that has money in their bank account, they wanna tax it. And I actually, I agree with you, Councilor Allen, that is absurd. Because that, what that's gonna do is it's gonna discourage any business from growing. Because the way you grow is through the cash that you keep. Well, you can't go short.
Right.
All us little businesses are too small to send our money offshore.
Yeah.
But I have a small business, I agree with this, it's the same, it's the philosophy of, that's penalizing any of us for keeping money in the bank. And most businesses need money in the bank because they're cycle, you know, they're going cycles, and you have busy times, you know, like restaurants in particular, they're, they have seasons that they do not grow business. So if they don't keep money in the bank, they're gonna go out of business. And now they wanna tax it money in the bank.
I was looking at it from a, a mental health point, if you, because there are people who do.
And he did call it a hoarders tax, so I get where you are. Now, he said liquid assets, and he comes right, liquid assets is money in the bank.
Yep. Thank you for hearing him now.
Someone will see you on the Hoarders Television Show.
No, no, I won't be there.
The other town councillor.
I will do the bipartisan support with that.
Thank you. It's a great deal.
Yes.
I have worked on it, you know, originally with the governor's budget, this proposal, and I find it ironic that the only tax he's looking at cutting is the one that doesn't go to the state. So, and then the military, the car tax, and the municipality is collected, now all, now we're gonna go, and I understand it's a benefit to those who would not have to pay that tax, but it's the one, the one tax he's proposing or cutting is the one that the state doesn't see any of the money from.
Except that the prior governor proposed cutting the exact same tax. Because lot, there's a logic to it, I don't agree with it as well, I, but, there is a logic that in one town, that one car is taxed at five hundred dollars, and another it's taxed at a hundred, the same car. So, the two governors, Republican, one Democrat, have both proposed the same tax. There is some merit to that, I don't agree with it because I see what Leger loses for money, but I do see where they're going with that. But what I would like to discuss is this last week and how well our apting town mayor has done. And how well the mayor's assistant has done, the town has run. We actually had better roads than most other towns. We did not need the National Guard to plow us out. It took a little while before I had two lanes on my road, but you know, you get used to that when you live in the country. That was a lot of snow. And I think we handled it really well, I think we should be very proud of ourselves. I think Lind did a great job. But I agree, John can't go out of town anymore, that's it, it's done.
Well, honestly, to that point, we really don't know what an emergency would look like if John was here.
Poor John. He can't even watch this, he's gotta cruise, he doesn't know what we're doing.
Any other comments? Okay, I have a couple comments. First of all, we really need some, a member of the board of, uh, one more member of the Board of Tax Assessment Appeals. Due to minority representation, it has to be a Democrat or someone unaffiliated. We have two Republicans now. Actually, we have three Republicans, but one is going to be resigning. So, if you know of anybody, um, we really, really can use some help because that period is gonna be coming up. I've started putting out the word, so hopefully that, that word can get out. You know, obviously it should be someone somewhat knowledgeable. I was thinking of somebody in our industry perhaps, that we might be able to come up with a name, so. The other thing I would just like to say is to thank everybody, all of our emergency folks, boy, they had a lot of emergency calls. You have a radio share.
Yeah, the house fire. Did you guys, did anyone hear the house fire? I, the house fire came on, they didn't have the water because there was no fire hydrants. They get the water, they called every surrounding town, and all of a sudden, it's announced the structure has collapsed. And the dispatcher's saying, "R2, was everyone out of the building?" Tony doesn't respond. R2 was every, five times they asked Tony before he responded. By that time, I've almost had a heart attack on the couch. But everybody was out of the building. But he didn't allow, when they first got there, they didn't allow anyone in the building, it was soaking off. But you know, sometimes people go in anyway, and, I mean, it was a very tragic fire.
It was, it was the perfect storm, unfortunately. It was a house on a hill. It was icy to get the crews in, the snowplow got stuck on the end of the cul-de-sac. You know, it was just the perfect, it was just all the bad conditions.
They had a lot of calls. And they got the snowplows, the fire engine got trucked out, got stuck on open trails that same night.
But, um, as far as the emergency folks, the snowplow folks, the, um, just a fabulous job. And I have to say, I was really proud that these guys are finally starting to understand social media. Because we, they were texting me with information, and we were getting it all out there for the community. So those people that were, I mean, not everybody's on social media, but it's fun to see that kinda come together. We found a dog. That was kind of the most, that was an unusual story. Somebody put out on one of the websites that they had lost their dog. And I picked it up, put it on the community forum. Somebody's neighbors, the person's neighbor saw it, told the person, oh, the person was just like unbelievable. It was just one, it, it was incredible, some of the things that went on, so. Social media is a beautiful thing, and it did help bring people together. And I think we had so few complaints, so very few complaints. It was nice to see the communities really supportive of our snowplow guys, you know, giving them thumbs up as they went by.
When the complaints came in, Steve responded immediately, like, someone complained, "The snowplow just came out, came by a plow in my driveway." Which a snowplow does whenever it goes by. However, this individual needed to go, got just. Steve sent that snowplow back there, and they cleared out that person's driveway so they could get out. So I mean, there was a lot of really good response, yes.
Good communication, and you know, in a storm, that's, in an emergency, the communication is key. You might not be happy if you're sitting on a cul-de-sac, and there's no plow, but if you understand why, it, it really does well. So I'm sure Mark will have a few other things to say. I think that I was the last. Motion for prior meeting minutes?
Don't move.
Second.
Discussion, Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
I'm staying, I'm Deppson.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
No, I'd rather watch this.
Eight in favor, one extension? Received communications, referrals, committee, subcommittee liaison reports, admin, Mr. Eichelberg.
The administration committee met earlier tonight. We've spent a great deal of time talking about the proposed town of Leger ordinance. We've incorporated a few more changes. I think we're in excellent shape with it. We will be referring it back to lawyer, the town attorney. But I greatly anticipate that we're not going to see any, any changes or any significant changes. So we will be looking later at making, at setting the public hearing date on it. And we also covered a couple of other items that we'll see later on our list tonight.
Thank you, any questions for admin? Community services?
We have none, that's all.
Finances?
Finances came in about two weeks ago, and special meetings, right?
Mr. Song?
Information technology met November five, in fact, them. The committee reviewed the town's proposed technology use policy, which will be voted on as the agenda item this evening. My estuary provided the committee with her monthly report, which was discussed in detail. And some of the highlights were, number one, the land use department now has a permitting kiosk in place. This is a computer reserve for the public to complete land use permits online. And that replaces paper forms and eliminates the need to store paper forms. And also permits can be tracked through the application process, saving the town time and money. The town treasured, I'm happy to report now has a battery backup and a laptop, which allows her to continue working in the event of a power outage, and funny thing, we had one. She was, not a power outage, but she was able to, she reported today, she was able to work from home through the storm. And she also was able to complete several times sensitive financial transactions as a result of having a laptop. Finally, the committee discussed the different emergency communications software packages used by the town, who is, as a result of a recent upgrade request. And we'll be inviting representatives of the town's emergency services departments to a future meeting to discuss their thoughts on a common platform. We don't have any particular bias, we just wanna get their thoughts on what would the benefits be of having a common platform for all emergency services. And that's my report.
Any questions for IT? I would just like to add kudos to the IT director who throughout the storm, which, you know, all of it was happening over the weekend, finally, we were sending her updates, and she was from home posting things on the website and the Leger Facebook pages. Land use public works, Council Dombrowski?
Uh, land use met last week. We discussed with a resident about road ordinance forty-five, the application of driveway curve cuts and stuff like that, where he had felt not being equally enforced across the town. So it was in discussion with that, and that was kinda cleared up on how the process works with support of the planning and zoning commission chair, Mike Terry. We also received updates from Mike about the, with the activity that the planning and zoning commission was doing, and also moving forward with the budget work for this coming year. And also, we recommended approval of these to Gillette Prairie School, which we have on the agenda tonight, second public hearing.
Thank you, any questions for land use plan and public works? Board of Lea, Board of Education Liaison, Councilor Allen?
Yes, the Board of Education met last Wednesday. They voted to approve expenditure not to exceed twenty-eight thousand dollars for upgrades to the security at Gillette Middle School. That, I believe, is now coming in front of the town council board of finance for approval very soon. Done, perfect, excellent. They're working on a, a school age middle school and high school tobacco use survey. It's anonymous, so kids don't have to be made aware of who they are. But it does require parents' approval to participate.
Is that actually being instituted by Board of Education?
That is not a Board of Ed or a Leger, like, it's, it's a program that they participated in some time back, but they wanna gauge where they are in terms of tobacco usage at this point. Kudos to both boys and girls basketball teams, they both won their respective ECC titles, so that's good news for them. They're still working on revising the architectural renderings for the middle school, so when that comes up, we should see that. High school is named to the AP honor roll for the percentage of students that participated in advanced placement classes, so that was fantastic. That's pretty much it, the rest of this stuff deals with the budget, and that's stuff that we're all gonna be working on.
Any questions for Board of Ed? At this time, I would just mention that you probably saw in your correspondence, I received an email from Dr. Vaneer asking about the timeline for including the project on the May referendum. I did respond to remind him that they skipped a few steps, that it should, it should have. I thought I was kind.
Skipped a few steps.
That they, um, the project should've come to the town council initially, we should've appointed a building committee, who would've hired an architect. At any rate, that, that being said, what I suggested to him, that they vote on it as a recommendation, then refer the project to the town council, and then we'll appoint the permanent building committee. They have two, um, they're able to have two temporary members on that committee, and then we can move forward from there. I also included something that we had in the files called building blocks to completion of a project. And it basically is step-by-step what you need to do to get it to, to a town meeting and referendum. Um, the interesting thing, this was written a few years back, was, did you tell me this was FX or?
Antidactyl.
Antidactyl.
Antidactyl. Very, it's very thorough, so you know, it's, it's a good document. And it really only changed to it is it talks about that the council will establish a building committee. We already have a building committee, so I sent him that. I sent him a copy of the ordinance, the building committee ordinance, just as another reminder that that's the way it's supposed to work. And I'm sure we will be, they're gonna be voting on this on March sixth, so our March meeting, this will be coming to us.
Unfortunately, the Board of Education, as well as the WPCA in the past, have always done their own projects, they have their own building committees, and somehow they've not caught up to, to change.
Right, but, but we'll, we'll just jump in, I just think they've lost some time because of it, so that's a learning process. But we'll, we'll get that accomplished, and whether we can make it by May, I'm not sure. It seems pretty aggressive, but we'll see, we'll see how it goes.
If we vote on it in March, we need forty-five days, correct? To make the May referendum. But it's gonna be a tight one.
Well, it also has to go before planning and zoning.
They haven't done that either.
No. They skipped, they skipped a lot of steps.
He said, "Well, I just forget municipalities that we're supposed to follow the same rules." It's just like we did in the town meeting, that we built the wall field that we didn't go through, we just forget that.
But anyway, that's where we were with that. So I just wanted to mention, and certainly we'll all work hard to try to make it. I know that the police station is a little farther along, because they have been working with the building committee. So, we'll see what happens, and we may have some decisions to make in terms of timing, et cetera, so. Because it's May, if it's not May, it's gonna be November probably, I would guess.
November's tough to do.
Yeah, it is, it is. So maybe we have a special.
Maybe we have to have a breath run. If we can't do them both in May, we may wanna do a special one where we do them both together.
Right, so, again, some things to be thinking about, we don't have to make a decision now. Report of, let me, oh, I'm sorry.
I wonder, I wonder, yeah, you do.
I would like to ask Roxanne, under number six, to put Board of Education Liaison slash WPCA Liaison.
It's on the, if you were savvy with online tools.
Oh, oh, that was nothing to have.
If you remember last meeting, the, the internet was down, and I was the only one that had it.
And you can't, you can't call our tech as a challenge.
No.
Okay, go ahead, my friend.
So I have another, another storm report. The WPCA hasn't met since the last town council meeting, but another Facebook thread. We were having a dialogue on the community forum about digging out fire hydrants, which we've talked about here before. The snowbanks are three, four, or five feet high, so we said on Facebook, "If you have a fire hydrant, dig it out." Well, a resident said, "Well, how would I know?" And so we went to the WPCA, or to Grotton Utilities on Sunday afternoon and emailed them, said, "Do you have a list of fire hydrants and a map of Leger fire hydrants?" We had it Monday, it was posted Monday afternoon. So that residents can go online, if you go to the town website, you can find your street and if you have a fire hydrant. And if you do, it shouldn't be dug out by now, but the point is, when the plows are plowing, Grotton Utilities isn't gonna go out there and start digging, because it's gonna get filled in again. So if, if a resident keeps, or residents keep their fire hydrants dug out, save ten, fifteen minutes in a fire, and that makes all the difference.
Do we take any fire hydrants out with the snowplows?
None that I know of, I haven't heard of them.
Nope, not sure we would find them yet.
The only guy, the only one that I always worry about is that one at the high school.
That's good, I checked it.
That's good, that's the one we can take an out.
But, so, so the ones that are most likely to be taken out were buried, have flags on them. And Grotton has already dug them out, I think we would've heard if, if they were sheer, but we'll, we'll wait a little longer.
As a prayer for no more storms. John's coming back, no more storms.
That's why it's snowing tonight.
Right. Okay, the Oriole assistant, Mark Fencroft, next.
Just as a reference, when you do your bonding for the Board of Ed, a lot of those things will run parallel, the planning, zoning, and can run at the same time, and so the thing, so you may make the main reading, but it will be very nuanced. So, um, the mayor's completed the departmental hearings with, regarding the budget. He continues to work on the SIP and other aspects of the budget itself. And as, as required by the charter, will be submitting on time, which is the first Monday of March. And I just believe that, that the PROACT prescription group program is moving along. We've, we've taken all the necessary steps. The little cards that will be mailed out, and letters that will be mailed out to the public are at the printer. And we anticipate that they'll be mailed, and the program will go active at the end of February. So as we get closer, we have a couple of milestones we have to pass, and we'll start publishing that information on the town's website, the social medias. I have some posters and things that I've put up as well. If anybody has any questions regarding the PROACT prescription group program, they can certainly call me at Town Hall, and I'll tell them about it as best I can. The town, as we all know, survived another storm. And, and as the chairman alluded, we have just a tremendous, tremendous volunteer base in this town. Our emergency management team headed up by Sean McGuckin, first met Friday. We discussed what we were going to do. We, we participated in the conference calls with the state and CLMP and all that. The emergency fire departments, the Leger volunteer emergency squad, they had staffing, starting on Friday, full staffing of volunteers. These volunteers were there twenty-four seven, right up until, I think, they, they finally dismissed them on, on Monday morning. And they rotated through, and they had some tough jobs out there. The, and, and there were good jobs and there were bad jobs. Pulling, you know, pulling cars out of ditches. Unfortunately, they had, had to fight a fire, which was a sad thing. But they also got to take some seniors to the, the shelter. Now, these guys, they, you know, they used their own cars. And so these are, these are some tremendous volunteers that we have in this town, and the residents should be thankful for these people. Our police and our dispatchers, the police were out there twenty-four seven. The dispatchers, I think I spoke to the same dispatcher for three days. I don't think he ever went home. You know, they manned their desks, they manned their posts, and, and it, it was tremendous. And, you know, the, the, the Public Works Department, I cannot say enough about the effort these men and ladies went through. They came to work, and I just would like to very briefly tell you what they did. Because for all the complaints that you have, and there weren't very many, these guys just did a phenomenal job. And I drove in other towns, and our, our streets were just, just beautiful. These guys came to work on, Friday morning at seven AM, started preparing for the snow. At midnight on Saturday night, some forty hours later, they finally sent eight of them home, and kept eight of them there. And we had a crew of about fifteen people, ten full-time plow drivers, two part-time drivers, and two part-time laborers, as well as the Public Works Director and the Highway Superintendent. So at midnight, forty hours after they started, eight of them went home, eight of them continued on. Saturday morning at eight AM, after fifty-three hours of non-stop plowing. Suddenly, they finally sent the first crew home, and the second crew reported back. That was a total of fifty-three hours of, of non-stop plowing with minimal sleep. You don't get a lot of sleep sitting in a plow truck.
Let's hope they're not sleeping.
Well, you know, they had, and then we had the, the, the loss of equipment. You know, we had two feet of snow, and our, we lost a couple big trucks. We had one truck at the fire standing and salting for the, the fire engines. We had trucks hit by limbs, by power wires. And so the department did very well considering the circumstances that they, they were dealt. To date, they continue clearing the fallen trees that are alongside of our roads. Our social media is fantastic with finding these things. You know, you can ask the question, "Where's, where's a downed tree?" And within fifteen minutes, you'll have twenty locations, so that it, it's working out. But the, the department is, is, is now rested, it's, it's back to cleaning up, and touching up the roads, plowing back still, cutting up branches. All of our, our trucks are back in service as of this afternoon, and we expect the remaining two trucks to be available to us next week. We had some transmission problems, so. The Public Works Department did just a phenomenal job. And I, I think we, we, we have a tremendous crew there headed up by Maslin and Dean. They're just doing great work up there. So I just wanted to point out that you guys were really out there all the time.
I would just add, as far as the storm, CLMP, as somebody that was one of the last to get power back after almost two full days, um, once they got here.
They were here.
They did a phenomenal job. They took a little while to get here, but I'm sure there's reasons, and Mark and I have talked about this.
We had forty crews come in on Sunday, and, and that's when we really saw the power restoration come back. It was very hard getting the crews here on Saturday, because I ninety-five was, was not passable, eighty-four was not passable, so the major roads were not passable. So once they got passable, then we got large, a large contingency in here. And when they came in, we had a very good town liaison who was out driving around, picking spots, sending crews. So that was the big, the big change from Hurricane Sandy, where we didn't have a liaison that was out and about. This gentleman was, he was sending crews, he was on, on his phone, in his car, sending crews to various locations. Along that, my last comments, because I don't wanna keep you, to the public, I'd like to say that if you lose... to say that if you lose power, you have to call CLMP's 1-800 number. That's the number. And the reason I say that is because, very briefly, the way the system works, if you call that number, it generates a work order. And if you call for your entire neighborhood, say you have 15 houses out and only one person calls, they think that's, the computer at CLMP looks at that as one house being out, okay? So it says, okay, this is a low priority, it's only one house. If you don't have power, you've got to call, because if all 15 of those residents call, then CLMP raises the urgency and gets a crew to you sooner. So, and calling multiple times does not constitute. It's got 15 different phone numbers. The computer is smart enough, it generates a work order, that work order then goes to the operations center, and the operations center then determines, okay, we have 15 houses out, we have 300 houses out. That's how it dictates where the repair crews go. So if you don't have power, call CLMP. You can call Town Hall, but you get much faster service if you call CLMP, because the whole system works off of your phone call to CLMP. So if you ever lose power, call CLMP.
Yes. This storm, fortunately for us, was mostly our area of the state, so CLMP was here in Big Grove, which is why I thought it might have passed. But because it was declared, we were declared another one of those major storms, we have another FEMA issue for reimbursement.
Correct.
So is everybody aware of that?
Yes.
Because that always makes me nervous, but the fire companies and LBs, they're a little slow to realize they got to put these reports together. Steve's usually on it, and he was on the scanner all weekend. I don't think that man slept at all the weekend.
We briefed the crews on Friday. The emergency management heads at the meeting said, make sure, because we knew it was going to be a FEMA event, make sure you have your paperwork, and then through the weekend, we reminded them, documentation, documentation.
We don't need any more FEMA events.
Ironically, when I came in on Friday morning, I ran into Steve, he had just finished the last paperwork.
For the last, I know. The paperwork for FEMA is incredible, the documentation. I mean, it's worth it because we get reimbursed, but we don't really need any more of these things.
That's my ordinance.
That's my authority.
Mark, you mentioned that a number of seniors were taken to a shelter. What shelter did we use, and do you know how many seniors?
Yes, there was, we used the, we use a regional shelter approach. We team up with Groton and at times with Stonington, based on the availability of Red Cross volunteers, because they have to be trained. So this, because Stonington was so hard to hit, we chose Stonington as the location, the Stonington High School. And we transported, I think, 10 people. Our volunteers transported 10 people. How many people went? I think it was 14 from the town. I think it was four. So generally, we use Groton Senior Center.
But they didn't open.
But they didn't open, so we used the Stonington Center.
Can I just clarify, though? We don't really, we don't really make, I mean, we kind of make that decision, but they tell us, which, they encourage the regional, if you remember that from Sandy.
They encourage the regional based on the number of volunteers that they have. Obviously, they can't cover every center, because they don't have enough volunteers.
And in fact, we had to, the first volunteer, the first group that was shuttled to Stonington were three Red Cross volunteers that live in town. That was the first group that got shuttled there, so.
So it was still nice that there was a shelter available for people who didn't have heat, and they had someplace where they could go to sleep and be warm and get hot food.
Now, unfortunately, I mean, there were people volunteering their houses, like, all over the place, so I imagine that some people did...
Oh, they stayed in town.
Stayed in town with friends and stuff, so.
My concern there...
Volunteer his house for me.
My concern is, I spoke with at least one resident, actually two, who didn't know where the shelter was, didn't know that there was a shelter, didn't know that there was any provision, didn't have electricity, so also didn't have access to, you know, media or anything. I think there's a problem there that still needs to be solved, and I'm not sure how.
I would, if I could answer, the answer is, they should, they should pick up the phone and call the non-emergency police number.
But if you don't have power, then you don't have phones.
Yeah.
See, you have your little smartphone, but when you're out, you know, I had, I have no phones, my cellphone just dies quickly. That's the problem. People don't have phones. If they've lost their power, they can't look at the internet, they can't watch TV, they can't hear the radio. I mean, years ago, people had radios with batteries, so they could listen to the radio, but they don't even have that.
The answer to that question is, one possible solution is to revert to those yesteryears when we had transistor radios or battery-powered radios. If you look at any emergency kit recommendation, it says a, you know, we used to call them transistorized radios, but a battery-powered radio, you should have one. The town transmits this information via the radio.
They do.
Yes, we do. We do 106.5, whatever their AM version is, 99 something, plus we do the big Ford ICH CTY Cool 101, and there's another one in there. So we do transmit via radio. I try to, at least twice a day, speak to the radio station, so. And if it's a scenario where they can get in their car and drive, they should go to the police station and ask a question.
Or Town Hall.
Or they can come to Town Hall, but in this last event, we didn't open Town Hall at all.
But a lot of times, it is open, and there's...
If you have a major event like we did with Sandy, Town Hall is open.
And I understand and appreciate all of that, but I do believe that there is still a communication issue where some of this, some of the kind of stuff we're talking about needs to be communicated.
February the 26th, 7:00 p.m., Bill Library, yours truly is putting on a presentation on things we learned from Sandy, things we learned from this, power restoration, things you need to do to prepare yourself. I will give that presentation to any group that can, you can get five people, I'll sit and talk to them and tell them what they need to do.
We've come a long way.
Absolutely.
Since before, but there is, there is that, still that older generation...
Like I say, I spoke with at least one older person who spent a very cold Saturday night and did not know what the resources were that were available. And when I started telling her, she was amazed.
Like I said, you find me a group, I'll come talk.
Senior Center.
I've been there already, twice. I was there today again.
That's what they need to hear.
What were the two trucks, do you know, that lost the transmission? Big ones or little?
Big.
Big. They were big trucks. One was transmission, one was the...
Drive shaft.
Drive shaft.
I know, because I heard it.
Did you get that on the camera?
The transmission was, I heard instead, my truck sounds funny, I think I can bring it back.
We had one truck that was hit by a tree and a live power wire at the same time. That just got its windshield back today, so.
We sometimes have trucks that hit trees, we rarely have trucks that get hit by...
This is a new one.
Okay, thank you, Mark. All business, Land Use Planning?
Make a motion to set a public hearing date for February 27, 2013, to be held at 6:15 in the Council Chambers Annex Building, 741 Colonel Ledger Highway, to receive comments and recommendations regarding proposed lease agreement between the Town Ledger and Lisa Lazaro for lease one classroom at the Galesbury facility, formerly known as the former Galesbury School, located at 7 Robot Road. Galesbury is contained in the draft dated December 26, 2012.
Any discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadke?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Novrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
All business, would anybody like to amend the agenda at this time?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Any discussion? Roxanne, call the roll.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Nice, Mark.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadke?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Novrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Admin?
Let's see. I'll make a motion to set a public hearing on March 13, 2013, at 6:30 p.m. in Council Chambers Town Hall Annex, 741 Colonel Ledger Highway, led you to receive comment on the proposed light ordinance for the Town of Ledger.
Second, second, that's fine.
6:30?
Just asking.
I have no idea.
Well, if we go right as we started, I just noticed that the last couple laughed a lot.
And I'm going to, I gave a lot of latitude at the last meeting. I'm not going there that time. I will hammer the gavel for three minutes.
I think after two prior public hearings, this is number three. I think, yeah.
Any other discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadke?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Novrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Next item?
Administration Committee did not move on this. We had not had time to properly vet it.
I know you have spent a whole hour on comments from citizens on the light ordinance.
Yes, we did.
Number six?
Motion to set a public hearing on February 27, 2013, at 6:45 p.m. in Council Chambers Town Hall Annex, 741 Colonel Ledger Highway, led you to receive comment on the proposed amendment to ordinance number four, ordinance providing for the term of office and appointment of a zoning board's appeals for the Town of Ledger. Second.
Any discussion?
Essentially, what we did was went back and updated this ordinance. There was wording in it that said that these officials would be elected, not appointed, and so we changed that, and that's the essence of the change.
And it's expected to be short. Any further discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Wadke?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Novrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Finance Committee, item number seven.
Motion to grant a big waiver to Seal Coating Incorporated for road microservicing and crack sealing services in an amount up to $800,000.
Second.
Any questions, discussions?
Just briefly, Seal Coating Incorporated, we received a presentation by Steve Maslin, the Finance Committee. Seal Coating Incorporated is the only company that does this work. Microservicing and crack sealing extends life of existing roads without having to do major, is one of the things that we've seen in the time that we've had the major work done the last three years for the town here. About $800,000 for seal life, we presented a cruise ago for the last town council meeting.
This is a lot of money, so, question about seal coating. Is that the same company that did the seal coating last year?
Yeah.
Last year, yeah. Okay, that company did a great job.
Right. Yeah, because I asked you if it went to shooters, because that was the company you drove around the corner, and there was three little guys in the road spraying black stuff with no signs.
Yeah.
I called dispatch a couple of times, and they said, police officers out there.
This job is lasting a lot.
Yeah, they did a much better job.
Really, really hard stuff.
Any other discussion? Roxanne?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Novrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Novrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadke?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, number nine.
Make motion to grant a big waiver to Freightliner Hartford in an amount up to $144,000 for the purchase of a 2014 Freightliner 1.14 SD dump truck outfitted with a technical all-season body.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is, to replace one of our large dump trucks, 25 LD, at the end of its 20-year life cycle. Public Works Director went out and looked at International, and then compared it to the Freightliner, which has a better engine, there's also a...
Better transmission.
Better transmission, more power transfer, and for, basically for around $3,000 or more, you get a much better quality vehicle, which is what requires the... International is what you would get if you went through the state, and that's what the difference is. We looked at financing, thought it was a, for the value, how much we're worth of the product.
The first dump truck that I purchased when I was on the council cost $72,000. The price has doubled. That's why the Public Works Director is buying some of the smaller dump trucks, the 5-ton instead of the 10-ton, because these trucks have gotten so expensive. But we need them, we have a storm...
So, we basically had no way to monitor how much timber went out of there. And when a tree comes down, there's collateral damage. And if there's collateral damage, they kick a tree, there wasn't one. So, um, I understand that, but all I'm saying is I, I think we need to get competitive bids next time.
Do you know what the PSCS was going to charge?
Six thousand.
But I thought, it got significantly more, that's what I...
Yeah. Well, it was, it was more mature for us to, it had been logged.
But a lot of it wasn't going to be usable for wood, it was going to be firewood anyway.
It was a combination of firewood, they call that pole wood, and, and timber, saw timber. Uh, the Ecclesiastical Society had about the same acreage, much bigger trees, and a much more aggressive policy, meaning we agreed to let them take more trees. Where the town, trees were not as mature, there weren't as many big oaks, and they took a lot more firewood. So, and you get a lot less money for firewood than you do for saw timber. So, it's not quite, I, I don't think either property got, my personal opinion is I don't, I don't think either property got to enterprise, so.
And, and to your point, we need a, we need a better job of managing that kind of harvesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the things that we, I'm sorry, Bill.
We felt like they did a good job.
Yeah.
We had no control.
Yeah, one, one of the things that we had talked about in Land Use and Planning was, um, to protect the town's interest, having somebody employed on the town's behalf to independently monitor what is coming off of these properties. So that the, the logger says, "We're taking X number of board feet," we have somebody to protect our interests, determining that they are in fact taking the correct number of board feet.
That, that person calls a scaler.
And we need to work that into the equation at some, absolutely.
Good point. Any other questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Motion carries, number nine?
Make a motion to grant a big waiver to Freightliner Hartford in an amount up to one hundred and forty-four thousand dollars for the purchase of a two thousand fourteen Freightliner one one four SD dump truck outfitted with a tentacle all season long.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is, uh, to replace, uh, one of the large dump trucks, twenty-five LD, uh, at the end of its twenty-year life cycle. Public Works Director went out and looked at, uh, International, um, and then compared it to the Freightliner, which has, uh, a better, um, better engine, there's also more...
Better transmission.
Better transmission, uh, for power transfer and for, basically for, for us, about three thousand dollars or more, you get a much better quality vehicle, which is what requires the... International is what you would get, you know, if you went through the state, and that's what the differences. We looked at the financing, thought it was, for the value, how much more, what's that cost?
The first dump truck that I purchased when I was on the council cost seventy-two thousand dollars. The price has doubled. That's why the Public Works Director is buying some of the smaller dump trucks, the buy time is similar to ten time, cause these trucks have gotten so expensive. But we need them, you have a storm like this, you gotta have the big trucks, but they've gone up tremendously.
Any other questions?
Good, just real, I'm sorry, just real quick, is the, is the, uh, the life cycle of this new vehicle equivalent to what we're retiring? Twenty-one?
Twenty-one, okay. We actually don't always quite retire them until twenty, we've been known to push them. When I first got on the council, we had three trucks that were redlined, and the council wasn't willing to purchase new trucks. So, I suggested a field trip to Public Works and Council. Uh, Mayor Rodolico was on the council at the time, and we got to Public Works and he goes, "You really aren't driving these trucks, are you?" And we were.
Yeah.
We purchased three new trucks pretty quick. Those were twen, those were well over twenty, they were old at that time.
As part of the class meeting, uh, Steve Bassman presented his, uh, long-range plans for the vehicles, or how he's gonna face, and this is what happened to be two thousand fifteen, the policeman, and now is the time for that being in.
What did he say, he was gonna run out of money in two thousand twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
And he wasn't gonna be there anymore? It's pretty sad, so I said, "Yeah, yeah," we don't have that either.
Any other discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, item number ten?
A motion to transfer an appropriate two thousand four hundred ninety-four dollars fifty-five cents from LB's fund zero two one one, fund balance two one one dash three one zero zero zero, into account two one one two zero eight zero one five six one zero zero. LB's CNR fund operating supplies, we purchased the following medical supplies. Nine cardiac science adult AED electrodes, seven cardiac science pediatric AED electrodes, and five cardiac science Powerheart G3 lithium AED batteries.
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, essentially this was requested from, uh, nurses to replace, uh, expired material, uh, when you have relatively short life, and, uh, request...
Way too short of the life, and this goes back to the same discussion we had with Parks and Recs. This really isn't capital.
Right.
But because they have that fund, just as Parks and Rec does, we tend to not allow them to use their regular budget for some of the things that they should be paying for in the regular budget. But this goes to a discussion that we have been having at finance that they need to, LB's and Parks and Rec, we were talking about their CNR fund account for the next five years. But LB's needs to really start looking at these supplies that they routinely have to buy every year, and start budgeting it, coming out of that fund at the start of the year, because these things expire, and it becomes like this fire drill. Unfortunately, I hate to use that term, but they, they, they suddenly realize they need them, and now it's a rush, rush, rush to get them, when they really should be planning for them, because they have a very short life. And they're all important things that we need to have, and you cannot, I mean, I was at the fire companies meeting this week, and they cannot use some of this equipment because the electrodes are expired. And so they're, they're trying to move on to the fire trucks used the most, while the AED equipment, that's not expired. Because for insurance purposes, we can't use this equipment on someone if it's expired. So, this is something that needs to be really looked at, so that we're not getting too expired equipment before we buy it.
So this should be part of their, their annual operating budget unless capital expenditure?
Well, they, I mean, it should be part of their annual operating budget with the, I mean, if they, if we're not gonna fund their full budget, they can be using the CNR fund to supplement their budget. But we should be planning this ahead, because these things are replaced, this is a cycle. The AED batteries only last, I don't know, twelve months, eighteen months? The electrodes only last like a certain amount of time. They, and they're expiring all over the place, and we've got this equipment on fire trucks, on the ambulance, we now have an AED over here in the corner. I mean, these are important things, we need them, but they, they have parts that expire a lot.
So who inspects them?
I don't know, probably the fire marshal, but maybe not.
They do get inspected, I can tell you that.
They do get inspected, but I'm not, yeah.
There's been notes on there that...
Okay.
You can't use it, yeah. But that's what I'm saying, we should be buying the stuff before they expire.
Right.
Councilor like you said, we both, Parks and Rec and, uh, LB's, as part of their budget, would, would propose, especially in the case of Parks and Rec, you have to have a special time eating, there's a cross. So if we make that part of the budget, and they know in the spring they're gonna have up to maybe forty thousand dollars, if they put that as part of their budget as a capital exp, planned capital expense, then you're going to, the budget's already there.
Yeah, it goes through the SIP process, yeah.
The SIP process, so, you know, same kind of, same kind of theory.
Sure.
Any further discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, number eleven?
A motion to overexpend account one zero one one zero one zero one dash five three six one zero, specially approved council, by up to twenty-five thousand dollars for the fiscal year two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen.
Second.
This is, we, we've already expended eighty-five thousand, ninety thousand dollars budgeted for town council, the, uh, council. And the, uh, attorneys also provided a estimate back of up to twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars for the rest of the fiscal year as of December, when they sent it. So, the last fiscal, uh, last public hearing, we, in accordance with the, uh, budget process, authorized the overexpenditure in the, the council, after we've been reconciling.
We, we actually decided, since we require all of our departments to vote when, to, in the last month that they're going overextended, we vote on it, we felt it was very important that we do the same. And it also impacts Roxanne, because she gets this bill, she doesn't have a budget, we don't want to stress Rox. So we go, we allow this overexpenditure to, to stay currently the charter and make life easier for our great, our great administrative system.
Any further discussion? Roxanne, call the roll.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, item number twelve?
A motion to authorize Board of Education to expend up to twenty-eight thousand dollars from account two one zero seven zero one zero one dash five eight two five zero, CNR Board of Ed reserve for Lender Middle School security upgrades.
Second.
Discussion?
This is, uh, following Dr. Greiner's security presentation at Lender Middle School, uh, six weeks ago. Uh, the architect, Samco Patrick, myself, Tim Fickelstein, and Dr. Greiner, for the cluster area, and the architect came up with a, an idea of how to provide additional security. They already planned on putting, uh, magnetic locks on the doors going into the cluster area. Uh, but for a small amount of money, about twenty-five, twenty thousand dollars was a part of the time, they could put up walls that could entrance each cluster area with a lock, a door that will lock on both sides to provide a, a secure barrier to each of the cluster areas. So, that's what, uh, this is authorizing both the, um, magnetic locks on the doors entering the cluster area and to build walls, uh, in each interest of clusters.
And it solves the security problem, it still doesn't solve the noise problem.
Okay, that's, that's the thing we talked about before.
I know.
That's the twenty-eight million, not twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, it's a few in zeros.
Any further discussion? Uh, Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, um, IT, item number thirteen?
Motion to approve our proposed management information services technology use policy is contained in the draft dated January thirteenth, two thousand thirteen.
Second.
This is, uh, a policy that was written that covers town employees and use of technology. So, town computers that are used for business, it covers what can and can't be done for personal. It's quite thorough, the IT, it was written by the IT director. The IT committee has reviewed it, provided comments. The IT director also got comments from the mayor, we reviewed it again. Uh, it's a very well-written document, we've all spent some time on it, and I think she did a good job and recommend approval.
Yes, I think it's a great job done. The only comment I was gonna make is, in finance, we have had some discussions about the purchasing of IT software.
Yes, yeah.
That we don't have a, a town-wide policy on, you know, when do we upgrade to Office?
Funny you should mention that.
So, I was just gonna ask, are you, are you looking at that?
This doesn't address that, but we'll start...
I realized it, too, that's, that's why I was asking if you were going that one step further.
So, so in our discussions, we've talked about, well, the department wants to go to the next version of Microsoft Office. Why would you do that?
Right.
You know, most IT departments say, "No, we don't wanna be guinea pigs." Why, why buy something before anybody else has experienced?[1614.62]